Call a meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. If you have a comment for the board, please come to the podiums, get your name and address. Press your comments to the board and not to the audience in three minutes.
John Cox, 36, Captain's Road. I guess the thing I would just like to make comment on would be on proposed warrant article for town meeting number seven. So the town suspended efforts to remove and demolish the Lee Parish houses on July 1st, 2022, and allow the Lee Heritage Commission sufficient time with its four options for its presentation and future use as a proposed proposal for the March 2022 ballot. I hope that this will stay on the warrant. I heard some noise that this may be considered to remove it. I think there's several things why, well, from the Sustainability Committee side, I would like to say that our theme this year is to reduce, reuse, and whatnot, and that to tear down a building that looks pretty fair and square, I think would be a shame. I think particularly when we've got a number of uses that the town may want to put this to. And I think the other consideration is, you know, to keep it on the ballot so that the voters can decide on this thing. Over a strong majority the last year to keep the building and not tear it down is that it is one of the buildings that was on the seven to save from the state historical commission or whatever it was. And if we tear it down and we later go to look for some money from this organization for refurbishing the town hall and other things, I don't think they're going to look very happy at us. I think it would be far detrimental to tear this down at this point. So I think we need to keep it on the ballot and let the town decide. I guess it's, the select board can recommend or not recommend, but it needs to be on the ballot. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, my wife sent me with this letter to read.
Oh, okay. Name, address.
Yes, my name is Court Blumquist. I live at One Lee Hill Road, as does my wife, Elizabeth McCaffrey.
Thank you.
I'm writing to urge you to keep the warrant article regarding the parish house on the ballot. The parish house is an important feature of our historic town center, and demolish it will only diminish the charm and aesthetic character of our community. The citizens of Lee voted overwhelmingly last year to hold off demolition until possible uses and funding sources for the building had been more fully explored. Tearing down the building before that exploration is complete subverts the will of the people expressed by that vote. Tearing down the building now is also fiscally irresponsible, as it would endanger future opportunities to save the town money by applying for state grants. We've already received a grant to fund the study of the property with the intention of using that study to apply for further funding. If the town suddenly decides to tear down the house before the study has been completed, it makes it appear that we have acted in bad faith. This not only wastes the grant money and state dollars that funded the grant, it would also make us seem like an unreliable partner for the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, LCHIP, or other grant-making groups. This will almost certainly ruin our chances to win future LCHIP grants, such as the grant we expect to receive for the renovation of the town hall. The parish house was selected by the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for their seven to save list due to its historic character and its central location in the town center. Once it's gone, we will never be able to recover its history, but the town loses nothing by giving voters a chance to delay demolition as we complete studies of the property and apply for more grants. The citizens of Lee deserve a say in the decision that will make a dramatic impact on our town center. The board should keep the warrant article on the ballot. Sincerely, Elizabeth McCaffrey, Member, Lee Heritage Commission.
Thank you, Ms. McCaffrey. Anybody else? Mr. Tappan?
John Tappan, 187 Stepping Stones Road. And just want to remind the board of some statistics. Last year, Article 16, which is about the parish house, 599 voters voted yes, only 156 voted no. And the only articles with greater support than that article was the Articles for the Fire Department Thermal Imager, the Fire Department Self-Content Breathing Apparatus, and the Highway Department Road and Bridge Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund. So in the list of what's important to the voters, all the articles that were on the ballot that year, there are only four that got a higher, more votes than Article 16 for keeping the parish house.
Anyone else? Ms. Jenkins?
Patricia Jenkins, speaking for the Heritage Commission. We are, excuse me?
Address.
Nine Harley Mill Road.
Denise is going to yell at me.
Nine Harley Mill Road. Speaking for the Heritage Commission, this is something that we have been working on. We're in the middle of studies. We have been working with the state as far as funding, and as others have said, it is seven to save, it is on the register, so the state sees it as being a valuable building. And I think the townspeople should have a chance to say whether they think it's an important building to save. And by not putting it on the warrant, it takes that away from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Mr. Tappan?
Ann Tappan, 187 Stepping Stones Road. In 2018, the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance awarded a seven-to-save designation to the parish house. From the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance website, quote, "Seven to save was created to focus attention and resources on significant historical properties in New Hampshire that are threatened by neglect, deterioration, insufficient funds, inappropriate development, and/or insensitive public policy." In March 2019, Lee voters were asked to suspend efforts to remove or demolish the parish house. The article passed by a large majority. Over 79% voted to suspend such efforts. In September 2019, the parish house was listed on the New Hampshire Register of Historic Places. The Select Board signed the Determination of Eligibility Paperwork. In October 2019, the Select Board voted to provide funds to have both the town hall and the parish house assessed by a firm specializing in historic structures. Those assessments are in the preliminary stages and are ongoing. Assessments are required by LCHIP, the Land and Community Heritage Investment Program, in order to apply for grants. There is an article on the 2020 warrant to further extend the effort, extend the suspension of efforts to demolish the parish house. This would allow time to complete the assessments, time to evaluate the reports, and allow for considered decisions. Last week, when the warrant was discussed, two board members, Selectman LaCourse and Selectman Brown, wanted this article removed, an article that the Select Board placed on the warrant. The article simply asks for more time, completing the assessments, and a careful, detailed evaluation of the information is prudent. The assessments are needed to put the town in the best position for grants. To remove this warrant article would be short-sighted. Do not remove this article.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. All right. Item number three, the public bond hearing. So I officially opened the public bond hearing, and I believe we have a presentation from the TCVC.
I think only half the lights. We want to keep everybody awake, so.
Is that way good?
Yeah. Hello, everyone. A lot of people from last year. You've seen me do this before. For anyone who hasn't seen me do this, I'm a volunteer on the Town Center Vision Committee and a member of the Heritage Commission. My name is Court Blumquist. I've lived in Lee for four years now, at One Lee Hill Road, right in the center of town. The Town Center Vision Committee was created to create a plan of action for the town center structures and to inform the citizens of Lee about those structures, so I'm going to try to do that now. Last year, we presented a plan that touched nearly every building in the town center. As you might know, that plan failed to pass, but the problems with the town center remain, so the Select Board asked us to develop another plan that addresses what they've determined to be the most urgent issues. So today, I'll be talking about a two-part plan. First, we propose building a town office building, because even if the current buildings in our town center were in better shape, they wouldn't meet the needs of our town. And after building a new home for the town administration, our plan would renovate the town hall and return it to its function, its original function, as a meeting space. How did we arrive at this plan? You could have done this a million different ways, but we did have a process, and I want to walk you through that now. I'll begin with the problems, move on to the process that we took of finding a solution to those problems. That involves a provisional design, and then I'll talk about how we pay for it. So those are the four Ps of this presentation, because I like a literative list. All of these sections are going to be brief. We're condensing two years of work into what will hopefully be a short presentation, but we'll be taking questions at the end of our presentation, I guess. Is that part of the bond hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And we'll be holding more open house events in the coming weeks, like the one we held at Town Hall last Thursday. So let's start with problems. They break down into three categories: the condition of the current buildings, the security and access control of those buildings, and the space and environment within those buildings. We'll start first with building conditions. If you've been to a presentation from our committee before, you've seen this image. These are the joists beneath the floor of our town hall. They're no longer attached to the sill beam of the building because that sill beam is rotted away. The floor is now held up by cribbing placed on blocks. Thank you, Randy Stevens. That's not the only problem afflicting our town hall. In 2016, the Lee Commission both a structural and mechanical study of the building, and both noted many problems, which are listed here. None are urgent safety concerns, but all describe a building that is in need of major renovation. We can talk more about building condition in the Q and A, but for now, I want to talk about security and access. Our police chief provided guidelines to us regarding security. Those points break down to: control access to staff and records, identify visitors before they have access to either of those things, and capture those interactions on video. While the town hall is video monitored, access control in the Select Board office comes in the form of Denise, our town secretary, playing traffic cop from her desk. If Denise is helping one resident, it's easy for another to walk in and go directly to a staff member's work area or access files. The control is limited when staff are all working in one big room. That brings us to workspace and work environment. Our town hall, which was built in 1846 for the purpose of hosting meetings, is now carved into five workspaces, a conference space, and a lobby. The work environment is noisy. It's difficult to confer with colleagues, but even more difficult to concentrate on your own work. This is unavoidable when you're working in a large, open space where every interruption is heard by every town employee. This building can host as many as 13 staff members, contractors, and volunteers at once. And as we recently learned, 12 is the fire limit for the main room in the building. So if you come to a future town hall, you will see a member of the Lee Fire Department supervising us for that reason. The staff work over those uninsulated floors I showed you earlier, meaning most of them use space heaters just to keep their feet warm, adding to the unpleasant work environment. The building is so small, it can't hold all the records that the clerk is required to keep, so this storage container, which is neither heated nor moisture-controlled, holds some of the town records. So how do we fix all of this? Our process started by verifying that the existing spaces, the town hall, the town hall annex, and storage spaces, were actually too small, and determining how big an office building ought to be. In 2018, we interviewed departments and put together a list of space needs. This was not incentive, open-ended questions like, how big do you want your office to be? But instead, we asked staff to choose from a menu of office spaces like this one. We then added up those spaces, storage spaces, bathrooms, et cetera, reviewed them, and found savings were possible. For example, when you design a storage space from scratch, you can make it much more efficient than when you're fitting storage into an existing space. So rather than base our assumptions on what fits into a garage, turn police station, turn planning and zoning office, we looked at what purpose-built storage could hold, and therefore, we saved on building size. So this was an involved process, and we're glad to go into detail on this at the Q and A or at a future open house, but here are the results of that work. Our study found that staff require roughly 4,300 net square feet of space. The current town hall, annex, and storage spaces add up to 3,400 square feet. That means the new town office building would be about 26% larger than the spaces used now. This isn't a huge increase in space, but it's enough to add space to allow for individual offices, dedicated meeting spaces, and so that staff and town records can be kept safe and secure. The next step in our process was taking those space needs and arranging them into a workable design. This design was created to give us enough detail, like the gross size of the building, so we could hire independent cost consultants. That's given us a realistic cost of a commercial-grade building that fits everything we need. We pursued this approach instead of spending more taxpayer money on architects and consultants, which I know that some people in the audience are particularly annoyed by. We're annoyed by it as well. Instead, the committee generated its own CAD drawings, which were enough to pin down our costs. Our goal was to determine a reasonable price, not to generate a final plan. So you'll see, as you'll see in the schedule overview, should the warrant article pass, we would hire a firm to create a bid-ready design and then put that design out to bid. We settled on a two-story design after considering these nine criteria. Neither a one-story or two-story option offer a clear winner on the first six criteria, but a two-story building with an elevator stood out by providing more interior-accessible space, reducing the building's overall footprint, and providing a more low-impact development design. That makes a two-story building both better for the environment, and it preserves our land for future uses. So let's see what that layout looks like. Keep in mind, this is just to generate costs, not the final layout of the building. So the first floor is split between the town clerk tax collector's office outlined in green and the planning and zoning department outlined in blue, the two most high-traffic functions in the town administration. The second floor houses the Select Board offices outlined in yellow, including the town administrator, the finance officer, assessor, and other offices. And of course, Denise will no longer be a traffic cop in the same way she is now. The basement provides space for a mechanical room, elevator room, IT closet, and other necessities. This layout also creates separate public and staff-only spaces. Access to staff spaces is controlled by either a keypad door or a buzz-in door, as we're calling it, on the first floor. Outside of the building would be monitored, as well as the public spaces within. Similarly, the second floor would have, would place the town secretary's desk behind a service window, and access to the Select Board offices would be behind another secure door. The basement would also be accessible only if you had the code for the elevator or the basement stairwell door. This design houses all of the town administrative functions in one building. It provides a more efficient workspace with dedicated conference rooms, so meetings don't disturb the work of others, and security monitoring with controlled access. Our committee also created this provisional site map to show a possible location for the office building and a layout of the parking lot. Expanded parking would not only serve the town offices, but also provide needed parking for the library and town hall, which will host Select Board meetings after this renovation. Again, this layout is not final, but it's what we generated in order to determine the cost of the project. We have a detailed schedule prepared, but here's a brief overview of the timeline that we think is achievable. You can see that this includes submitting a grant application for the town hall. That's because the renovation of the town hall could be funded up to 50% through an LCHIP grant. Our committee has taken significant steps towards securing such a grant. In October, the Select Board approved an assessment of the town hall, which is now underway by AECM architects. This includes assessing the current state of the building, providing detailed costs of a renovation, and preparing a report that meets LCHIP guidelines. Our project has a very good chance for funding, especially because we plan to return the building to its original use. I know that's a quick overview of town hall. We can talk more about it in the question and answer period. Now I'll turn things over to John Tappan to talk about the budget, funding, and bond. Sorry. Help? How we'll pay for it? John?
John Tappan, also a member of the Town Center Vision Committee. The conceptual project budget is based on three estimates from two independent cost consultants and buy-owner cost estimates from vendors. The town office building, with two stories, a full basement, elevator, a footprint of 3,200 square feet, and with all levels ADA accessible, costs $2.23 million, including design costs. The site development for all town center buildings, which includes land clearing, utilities, septic, parking lots, walkways, site lighting, and landscaping, costs $530,000, including design costs. With contingency at 5%, that's $138,000, and bond counsel may be up to $14,000. That's a very high-level conservative estimate, for a total of $2.91 million. Separately, budgeted town hall renovation is expected to cost about $400,000, but that's a number that we are waiting on the assessment for. Funding sources. A search was made for possible grants, and the town has an existing capital reserve fund to draw on. The balance will come from a bond. Total cost is $2.91 million, and of the grants identified, the town would not qualify for USDA grant, nor would we qualify for a CDFA grant. From the town buildings capital reserve fund, the capital improvement plan does not show any town center building withdrawals that would be replaced by the town office building construction. From approximately $220,000 available, a withdrawal of $112,000 is suggested. Other sources, such as fund balance, are possible. The remainder, $2.8 million, would come from bond. A level principal 20-year bond is proposed. The repayment of principal shown in blue is the same each year, and as the remaining loan balance decreases, interest payments, shown in orange, also decrease. The net interest cost for 20-year bonds issued by the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank on June 4th was 2.6%, a decrease from the 3.05% this past January. An interest rate of 2.7% is used here. If the bond was issued in the second half of fiscal year 2021, there would be no payment until fiscal year 2022. That would eliminate that $38,000 that's shown there for 2021. There was another bond sale on January 8th, just last week. The results have not been publicly announced, but we have heard that the 20-year bond went for 2.1%. If the interest rate is 2.1%, to show what might be the other extreme, that would reduce the fiscal year 2022 payment by almost $16,400. Bonds can also be structured for level debt service. This reduces the cost in the early years at the expense of greater cost in the later years, an increase in the total interest paid, and perhaps a somewhat higher interest rate. In this example, at 2.7%, the interest payment total is increased by more than $66,500. Looked at in detail, this chart shows the tax rate amounts that would support the current debt service plus the renovating town hall appropriation. That is, to show the 2019 tax rate and the amounts that would support the proposed town center project costs with a level principal bond of 2.7%. The reference level is the current tax rate, which includes 15 cents to pay for the public safety complex bond, which is retiring in fiscal year 2023, and 8 cents to pay for the renovating town hall capital reserve fund appropriation. No, I'm sorry. 8 cents to pay for the transfer station bond retiring in 2024, and 11 cents to pay for the renovating town hall capital reserve fund appropriation. The bond payments decrease each year. In fiscal year 2021, the appropriation for the renovating town hall capital reserve fund would add 32 cents to the tax rate. That is, if the total cost comes in at about $400,000. So that could be changed when we get the final appraisal. In fiscal year 2021, the town center bond would add 8 cents. When the first repayment of principal occurs in fiscal year 2022, there's also predicted to be an increase in operating and maintenance costs due to the increase in town building floor area and an increase in insurance premiums for the increased building value. This is estimated to add 11 cents to the tax rate. In fiscal year 2021, the projected tax rate increase above today's rate is 29 cents. The largest increase is in 2022, when the added debt service plus increase to operating and maintenance will have added 43 cents to the current tax rate. In fiscal year 2023, this drops to 41 cents, and then to 26 cents in fiscal year 2024. Again, these are from today's rates. They're not cumulative. If the interest rate is 2.1%, then that peak in fiscal year 2022 would be 40 cents rather than 43 cents. What effect would this tax rate increase have on the tax bill? This year, the median house value in Lee is $230,500. If the interest rate is 2.7% for a level principal bond, this property valuation would see a tax increase of $66 in fiscal year 2021, $100 in fiscal year 2022, drop into $94 in 2023, and down to $61 in 2024. If the interest rate is 2.1%, that peak increase in 2022 would be $92 for the median value house instead of $100. And if the bond is a level debt service at the higher rate of 2.7%, then that peak increase in fiscal year 2022 would be $83 for the median value house instead of $100. And we now take your questions. Turn back to the chair.
Any questions for anybody? Either it's an excellent job, or Mr. Zaski?
Up front?
Please.
Always.
Paul Zaski, 46, Lampre Lane. I have a lot of questions, but I'll start with two. The work that's being done on estimating the cost of... The work that's being done on estimating the cost of repairing the town hall and parish house. Uh, last week, we were told it was expected to be in this week. When are you expecting us to see that work?
Um, we don't have a, we don't have a final rough number yet. The committee has a meeting with the company on Wednesday, uh, two days, two days from now, so we should be able to get more information then. But we don't have that final number yet. It's a final rough number.
Is it possible to, to get a number without getting a full text of the report before?
Oh, you won't get the full text of the report until the end of February, the beginning of March. But we can get the rough number, but we don't have a final one yet.
Okay, 'cause we're running out of time on bond hearings and, and the like. Uh, the second question for the time being is, is I, I have followed this process, I'm one of those people in the audience who like architects, and, uh, I think they have a lot of value. And in, in your work, you, uh, you have wonderful listings and of, of the specifications for the building, and they're not part of this presentation. You had done a lot of research on materials and insulation and orientation, and I think it would, uh, it would be valuable to have some of that as part of the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Tappin?
The last part, the last question is a good question, and, um, in the interest of focusing just on the bond, that's why it's not here, um, but those are questions that we could answer at, um, another open house or other presentations. In fact, you would have that material.
Well, unless, and they also want to come in front of you, but it didn't look like it.
Paul Kuzowski, 46 Lamp Relaying, I'm commending you for the work you did. I think it has value, we're talking about a $2.9 million bond. Uh, you put a lot of thought into our values and insulation and materials, a whole lot of work into that, and, uh, I think there must be a way to share that.
Any other comments? No. Okay. Sure. Oh. See, somebody else better come up, or Paul's gonna keep coming up.
Well, I have all of it, so I think, you know, I have questions, and questions are good things. Uh, the, the net square footage that was listed was at 43?
Thirty-two something, that's one floor. That's the, that's the footprint.
That's the footprint, okay, and, and so my recollection is that the, the overall gross square footage was somewhere around 5,200?
Mr. Tappin, I think that's...
Uh, the, the footprint of the building that we drew, um, including the, um, entry vestibule, uh, which is like an owl in the front of the building, uh, is 3256 square feet. Um, the basement is a gross 3,200 square feet, um, and the second floor gross area is 3,200 square feet. Uh, 'cause within that, not all of the areas are finished, um, so the, uh, net finished area is about 5,500 square feet. The total gross closes about 9,600 square feet, 3,200 times three. Um, the basement, uh, more than half of the basement is, um, unassigned. The basement is, um, conditioned space, um, the walls, um, have, the insulation has to be covered with sheet rock, they're finished, um, the ceiling is finished, um, but, uh, there are only a few rooms planned for the basement.
Early in the slideshow, there was a slide that had the figure of 43 under net square feet, but it's out of all.
Okay. When, when you look at the, uh, program needs, you're looking at, uh, what do you need for an office space for this person and that person, and what do you need for storage and so forth? Um, and, but the program needs, uh, you know you need corridors to connect offices together, you know you need stairways to get from one floor to another, uh, but those are not counted as part of the program needs. Uh, that ends up being, uh, enrolled into what's called, architects call the grossing factor, where you add up all the program needs, and then to get the total size of the building, um, you've got to add on the area of the walls, the corridors, the stairways, uh, the elevator shaft, and so forth. So when I add those on, that's where I get to approximately 5,500 square feet.
You might want to get the 5,500 in there somewhere.
Any other questions? Comments? No? Mr. Cox?
Yeah, I guess they, uh, you had, uh, $112,000 that would come from town, existing town funds and whatnot, and, um, the unassigned fund balance that we have is, that has not been considered again, has to work against that, and I think this is something that's come up many times, of what is that fund balance, and is this the time to bring it to the proper, the proper level? Um, and whether this is appropriate, or, uh, has that been considered, I guess would be the question, has that been considered to, um, to use those funds?
It's a possibility, a little over 2 million, a little over 2 million is the unassigned fund balance. It's the, the restriction that the board has placed on itself, uh, is to at least keep $1.5 million in that, so you could potentially use some of it. But I don't think, the board has not talked about using any other funding, so what's this particular time? But that's a possibility.
Yeah, and what is the, well, I guess there's, someone has said, or some study saying the town should have a certain amount of fund balance, um, or who assigns that, and whether that's, uh, that's appropriate, and, uh, what interest is that using compared to what we'd be paying in interest and, and the things I think is what the...
I don't know, there's not really a how much we did, it's at Peoples Bank, and it's not necessarily all cash sitting there either.
It's not cash.
Yeah, so some of it is, but, uh, uh, some of that is, um, we put out the tax bills, a certain percentage of people don't pay their taxes, that's shown as an asset, but we don't necessarily have the cash for that, so it seems like that, so.
Just to keep you fluid between...
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I don't know what the latest interest rate we're getting on funds at Peoples.
Probably not even 2%.
Yeah, so, I know the trust funds are getting, uh, you know, more than 2%, uh, I don't remember what the latest number is, but those funds are very well invested. Thank you.
Just to comment on that, please, about Mr. Sfond and Mr. Cox. We did, we do use some of those funds, the unassigned fund balance, I forgot, how much Julie did we put against the tax rate?
$250,000.
$250,000 last year, so we, yes, we could use those as money.
At one of our recent committee meetings, Ben Jeans is on the committee, who is also the town treasurer, commented that if you, if we were to take a money out of the unassigned fund balance, it could also potentially affect our credit rating, and then you see the interest go up, and you're sort of taking out of one pocket to put into, so, probably Peter, I don't know what the proper analogy is, but it would affect the credit rating, which is excellent, though.
The other thing, just to note, one of the things that Mr. Tappin talked about in terms of bond council, um, the open house, we had this last Thursday, um, Brian Cisneros, who is the league representative to the school board, was telling us lots of information, and one of the things that he said is that that $14,000 is assuming we took three draws on the bond. Um, one of the things he did tell us is if you use the same bond council as the rest of the people who are applying for bonds at that particular time, the cost of doing that particular legal procedure is spread over all the participants, so the cost would be significantly less. But the $14,000, that's like, worst case, so.
Any other questions? Two and one? Or twice? Anything else we have to cover in the bond hearing?
Um, no, other than whether the board is anticipating they're gonna want to change anything in the language of the warrant, but we could also cover that, maybe, when we get on.
All right, nothing else? All right, I officially close the bond here? Oh. All right, item number four. This is the second budget public hearing, so I officially open the second of the budget hearing. Anyone like to speak to anything? The board members have anything you want to talk about?
The board may recall a week ago, because there were still unanswered questions and issues relative to the ORYA program. I know some representatives from ORYA up here tonight would like to entertain that discussion first.
Good. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we stand, or is that some seats involved here?
Um, well, you need the microphone, so. If you want, take that with you to the...
Make sure that it's on.
Dancing back and forth. That table tips a little bit. Thank you. Yeah, so just state the names.
Matthew Lowe, Westerwood Association.
Uh, Brian Barina, also from ORYA, and Lee Ren.
Okay, welcome. During the last budget hearing that we had, there were some questions, and we appreciate your time coming to talk to us about those particular things. Some of the things that you can talk about, um, and I don't know if you had a chance to view what we did, so, uh, I don't know if you want to address some of those particular concerns, but there was concerns about, um, the amount of money that we paid to Oyster Run, how that was appropriated in terms of, you know, does that reduce fees, does that reduce fees for Lee residents, and if you can go into some of those things, that would be great.
Do you have any specific things that you would want to start with? I made some notes from the, the video that was posted, but if you've got pertinent questions to start with, I can find them.
Like, for instance, um, you were asking, I believe, really for 42,000, 40-something? So if we reduce that, what does that, how does that affect people who use their service from Lee? Does it change their fees appropriately? How does that work?
Yeah, it would. Um, I guess starting from the top, um, you know, we pulled our indirect and overhead expenses, the non-program related expenses as a baseline for what we go to the three communities, um, and that top line amount was around $269,000, and then we reduced that by various forms of income, like, uh, sponsorships or grants and stuff like that. And then when we get that bottom, um, kind of indirect need to run ORYA across the three communities, um, we apportion what we ask each town based on the enrollment, and Lee's percentage of the ORYA enrollment resulted in about $48,000 that we, that we, yeah, so you were close, yeah, $48,000 that we asked for Lee to run a 30-program rec, um, association, um, that hits around 200 Lee households. Um, and so as an example to your question, if the town were to contribute half of that, half of the administrative expenses that would go to every participant, all the sports on average, would be reduced in half. You know, if you met all of it, Lee residents wouldn't pay for any administrative costs. Pay none of it, they'd pay 100%, et cetera, et cetera, so that's, that's what that would work.
And following our first meeting with the ABC, um, they had a very similar question. We actually provided them with a worksheet that they could put in how much money they felt would, might be appropriated, and that would actually calculate a number that would be the Lee admin rate, um, following, so we assumed that they utilized that when they made their recommendation.
So I guess, if I can monopolize their questions for just a minute, it's our understanding in terms of the amount you asked Durham for was in the $70,000 range, and we're hearing that they're giving you next to nothing in terms of that number. How is that going to affect your ability to provide services and stuff?
It really just will cost Durham residents more. Um, you know, that's really what, you know, what is contributed by each of the town is, you know, subsidizes its taxpayers' participation programs. So, um, we're still budgeting, obviously you have to be more conscious of the bottom line, um, if you're not getting what you have, we've gotten in the past from towns, we work to either increase enrollment or increase grants, et cetera, but really, um, that reduction would just solely affect that town's residents, and they just have to pay more.
That's the quick answer. Of course, when you're looking at programs that were compared against any other town, local inclusive recreational program, um, we could use basketball as an example. In Barrington, it's, you know, $30, $40 to play a season of basketball. With ORYA, since they're a fully funded program with over $200,000 of, of budget provided by the town, with ORYA, we're in the full hundreds. So if that, for a Durham resident, goes up another large portion, um, we're starting to price ourselves out of a rec program. We're at travel prices then, um, and it starts to, um, be problematic that it has to find alternative sources of revenue to lower that overall operating need, um, but that takes a lot of time away from organizing program, um, so in some ways it can be a bad cycle, but it's what we have to deal with in short term by raising, raising fees.
Does the board member have any questions?
I would, um, I don't, I haven't seen any information relative to your costs. I don't know if you provided, I just didn't, I just don't have a copy of it.
Yeah, in our, um, submission, annual submission, it has, um, a program fee outlined for every program we offered in that past year, um, per either in-resident or out-of-resident or per community itself, and transition to that model.
Okay, so we have a copy then? Okay, I'll, I'll get that.
I can leave this with you.
I'm only too much from it till I see it.
Come on, leave it.
I'll get one from you, it's okay, thank you.
Of course. It doesn't look like this, do you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I may not have it in front of me, but we did, we certainly did get it.
No.
Any questions from the, in the audience? No? Anything for you, Larry, you're all set? Okay, all right.
Anything else you want me to address from the last meeting?
No, those are the questions that I had, um, in terms of, there was a question in terms of how the amount that each town pays, which you've already talked about. There was talk about it was spread out, there was talk about, you know, it doesn't affect, I, I just wanted to find out in terms of what that was.
And, and to be honest with you, there's been some discussion about, you know, what, what your admin costs of the building, what, you know, where's the money going, et cetera, et cetera, and I'm just personally happy to take a look at that, true.
Yeah, um, for the, just for comparison sake, I mentioned, you know, Barrington and, and Durham earlier, uh, us at roughly 269, I believe you quoted, um, that is on par with a, a fully funded budget for a size, similar sized organization as us, we actually did a little bit on the, on the left side. As an example, Durham's approximate budget for fiscal year 19 was 234,000, Barrington's was 219,000, which is a more population, um, sized town to, to lead in Durham's. So, you know, we're, we're within the realm of where we should be for a multi-town, um, basically rec department, but we're a 5-1(c)(3). So, um, if we were fully funded, those fees would be drastically lower on par with those other communities that have those programs and operating expenses covered by the, completely covered by the communities.
And we'll offer to, um, the 269 that I quoted, um, if you go to the audited financials that we've shared with the towns, um, this is fiscal year 2018, but if you go to the indirect, um, and I can break this out for anyone that can read the, but if you go to those administrative and indirect categories, those sum up that year to just shy of 282,000. So we reduced, um, that amount by about 4%, you know, again, that's the top line, and then we would let down to the 48,000 that we're only asking for Lee.
And one of the things that came up last time, which I'm just remembering, is in the agreement that we have with you guys, you guys take care of the field maintenance and things like that, um, how much is that? How much cost do you incur for those particular, like the seating and the...
So that is a shared responsibility, um, the town provides mow... The town provides mowing, a portion of electric, electricity that goes into the irrigation system, and other things. They do a whole lot out there, the fields look fantastic, as you know. Our Lee-specific expenses for the two thousand and eighteen year was four-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-seven. Our Lee-specific expenses for two thousand and nineteen, including electricity, which we just received, would be fifty-six-hundred. And then, we spend sixty-eight-hundred on creating the, converting the Massway Town Field, a baseball field, into a softball field, well, really, mixed-use field, so that we can include softball. So, that's a total of sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand-one-hundred for the past two years.
Okay.
Of course, we don't transition a major expense like that every year that we did for the softball field, but those things can come up.
Mr. Kinberg, do you want to come?
Larry Kinberg, Chairman of the Rec Commission. I just have a couple of questions regarding the P and L statement from August two thousand and eighteen to July two thousand and nineteen, which was submitted to Durham and Lee and Madbury. You have a line item here for professional services, thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Can you tell us specifically what that's for?
It will primarily be our bookkeeping services, which really, bookkeeping is, doesn't tell the whole story. They're essentially the finance and accounting division of OROA. So, not only is the bookkeeping in support of the tax filing, but it's expenses that came in support of our audit that was requested by the towns, and that was quite labor-intensive, cutting checks, so accounts payable, accounts receivable, and coming up with very program-specific P and L. So, they do quite a good job for us, but it is pretty labor-intensive. It's essentially our entire F and A department.
Okay. There's also another line item here, call management and administrative services, thirty-three thousand, forty-one dollars. Can you tell us specifically what that's for?
That was, OROA historically has had about three employees, Matthew obviously being one of them, and this past year, we just went down to two, and we used essentially that reduction in staffing to hire a consultant. So, the net personnel services is the same, it just kind of, the employees reduced, and then that additional expenses was what we hired instead with their employee.
Who is that consultant you hired?
Susan Cilia.
I'm sorry?
Susan Cilia.
Who is?
She's a former board member, Durham, sorry, a Madbury resident, a long-time OROA supporter.
Okay. Where does Lexian come into the picture?
Lexian Management.
That's the bookkeeper.
Okay, so that's the, that's the thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars.
That we discussed, yeah.
Okay. And Lexian, on their website, they say they're marketing and fundraising, bookkeeping and accounting communications, board meeting, committee meetings, event management, regulations and legislation. Right.
Yeah, we don't hire all those services.
Okay. So, so the management and administrative services, is that overlapping with professional services?
No, they provide two different functions.
Okay, I think that's all the questions.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So, I have a question, circling back to the maintenance of the field expenses, and I don't even know whether your organization has discussed this, but if the amount of money you get from Lee is significantly less than the forty-eight thousand dollars you asked for, do you think that that's going to have any impact on the services going forward in terms of field maintenance?
Without thinking about that specific question for a long time, my gut would tell me that initially, fees for Lee residents would raise, and the level of attention to the field would stay the same.
No, I mean, I guess what I was really more thinking of, because we're in the midst of putting our budgets together, whether we should anticipate needing to put more money in our highway budget for expenses relative to field maintenance. So, in other words, would Oyster River look at a reduced funding from the town and say, well, we won't be able to provide five thousand dollars a year in field maintenance?
It's tricky because of the MOU that we have. We are on the hook for that.
Right, but the MOU runs out at the end of March, so...
Yeah, I mean, anything to keep player fees at an acceptable level compared to comparable programs in neighboring communities, we have to look at, where the final decision would come, I'm not sure at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Bambi Miller, D.C. and Sherwin, right. I'm just interested, as far as you quoted the Barrington amount of how much they put in, is that just for kids programs, or is that their full recreation department?
That is just their recreation department.
So, it's a full recreation department, not just the kids programs that are for sports programs?
Correct, that is recreation.
So, the whole thing?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you both for coming in, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Anyone have any comments about the closed budget for two thousand and twenty-one? Nope? Anything from the board? Either they want to say or...
So, just a reminder from the meeting a week ago, although we went through the budget essentially line by line, and talked about changing some of the budgets, as it stands right now, the budget has not changed from what was originally recommended by the ABC.
Well, we did tweak some things that, it's noted on the new one in terms of, like, the transfer station equipment.
Yes, the capital reserve funds.
There was some tweaks.
Were affected, yes, but I'm talking about the operating budget.
Yep.
So, just a reminder that if the board wanted to increase any dollar amounts, or add any items to the budget with dollar amounts, it needs to be revealed in a public hearing, and this is the last public hearing that we have scheduled.
So, if you wanted to take something out?
If you want to take something out, that can be done outside of a public hearing. To add anything or increase anything, that needs to happen in the public hearing.
Anything?
No, I think the only comment I'd like to make is to talk about the parish house, and then in the discussion, everybody felt as though they said, just take it off. It's not that easy. I mean, if you go down through the articles as they stood two weeks ago, whatever, there's a very, very long shopping list for them. And if you put, if you put the parish house in there for, I don't know what the amount's going to be, but let's just say it's three hundred thousand. If you put the town hall in there, and I don't know what it's going to be yet, I haven't seen any numbers either, it's going to be three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, that's seven hundred thousand. That's competition for what people are going to see when they go down there, you know, to make decisions relative to building a new town hall, et cetera. I feel as though, the only reason I wanted to get those, those, if you would, parish house out of view, is because I feel as though it's competing with the voters', the voters' perception on how much, how much, as they go through these articles, how many times are they going to say yes, till they get weary over, you know, four hundred thousand here, three hundred thousand here, et cetera, et cetera. And I think it puts the number-one priority, which is the new town's town hall, I think it puts it at risk. That's just my opinion. So, you know, I want us to be a little prudent. The people here, if the majority is, everybody thinks, oh, hey, let's just go ahead and put it on there, leave it on the article, leave it on the warrant, and it's going to be, you know, who knows what the amount is? And we'll let the people digest it and see how it affects the vote. Hi, that's fine, I just want E to understand the reason that I want to take it off there is because I think it's competing for the yes, but on the new town center. That's just my thing, that's all it is.
Let me speak to that as well. Last time, because I was one of the main elements of taking it off, I think E has spoken my words. I really would like to get a new municipal building that would provide a, you know, efficient and productive youth environment for employees. I definitely want to renovate the existing town hall so it can be brought up for a meeting space for committees and commissions and other activities as well. And I'm hoping that the townsfolk will buy into this and go for the municipal building, and then we thought a little later on, we'd renovate town hall. But I didn't want the parish house to be competitive at this time, and I kept on hearing discussions about maybe it's going to be a place for committees and commissions and so forth. I really would hope that we could sell municipal building and renovating the old town hall to be the package for where we do all municipal activities, including meeting spaces and commission meeting spaces and other activities. And the parish house, maybe, if it does survive or it gets funding somehow, would have a different type of function, but not be competitive. So, that was my reason pushing to take it off at this time. So, I do have concerns about that particular area. So, I'm in the same boat as Mr. Brown is at this time, and that was the major concern.
And in terms of disclosure, there was also additional five people who would not or could not show up that sent the board members and the town administrator letters to support of Lee or not. So, and I hear what you're saying, there's no money that's being associated with the parish house, it's just, you know, giving it more time to figure out, because our focus is going to be on those two buildings. And I think one of the things that people asked, at least at the town hall open house, was, you know, tell us the whole plan. And we told them the things that we've talked about in terms of that, but definitely, first focus is the town office building, second is renovating the town hall. Other stuff will come after that particularly.
I understand, but with all due respect to the chairman, you sent an email out to the Heritage Commission saying, here's, you know, go ahead and write a letter into the board?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
In that, in that letter, you said there's no cost to the town for the parish house.
At this particular time?
I disagree with that. If we have that, that building sitting there for another year, we have, outside of any liability issues that go along with it, outside the fact that it's got to be moved an inch or five inches, or three feet, whatever it's going to be, which I don't know if the building will survive that or not, all of those things, all of those things are liabilities or costs, potential costs for the town. So, it's not a free ride to keep the parish house for another year. We've got to have a plan to get the parish house fixed and be able to, you know, fund whatever it's going to take to do it. But it's not free, even if it sits there and board by board it falls off, you know, something's got to be done, and there's going to be costs associated, and the town's going to bear those costs.
Ultimately, the thing that I'm also considering, one of the pieces of information that we got last week from one of the people that's on the assessment firm, who was part of the committee that chose the two thousand and eighteen L-Chip grant recipients, in her words, and I'm going to paraphrase here, in her words, if you take and put this, or take this particular one article off, and the parish house is reduced, we can forget about any L-Chip money for the town. She said she served on that committee, it shows the town has a disrespect for historical items, and the L-Chip people would not fund that particular thing. So, I'm looking at two hundred thousand versus, and I agree with you, Mr. Brown, there's some costs, there's no cost on the warrant at this particular time, but yes, there is some cost, but I'm looking at two hundred thousand versus those particular costs, and as you know, I'm a money guy, so that makes sense to me.
You might win if you get the L-Chip money. There's no, there's no decision on the L-Chip.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
Okay, so, you know, there we are, we'll wait to see how it comes out. It's fine.
Go ahead. Oh, say whatever it is, go ahead, you want to.
Well, but you're anticipating, or what's been discussed, is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for town hall. So, in order to get the two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, we have to spend upwards of two-hundred-thousand dollars or more on the parish house.
Do you know why?
No, you just have to not destroy it.
You just have to not destroy it.
So, okay, so it just needs to sit there until we get the grant for town hall?
If you want to look at it that way, that's a possibility.
I have a question. I thought to get the L-Chip...
I recognize you, Ms. Rossi.
I thought to get the L-Chip grant, the parish house has to be part of the municipal building.
No.
Mm-mm. So, it's a grant just to fix the parish house up?
Yep, those two separate things, two separate things. One of the things they told us, don't have two grants at the same time, competing against each other. So, based on Ms. Glover's comments, excuse me, you could go for the town hall this year, next year, parish house just sits there. And right at the moment, L-Chip's going to say, hey, they've got these two things, L-Chip is still looking at the town hall, they haven't done anything with the parish house, it still sits there, and they'd be okay with that. If you say, okay, we're going to put, leave this off the warrant, tear down the parish house, because it's supposed to be tear down July first, two thousand and twenty, you're going for a grant for the L-Chip, they're going to say, whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute, they're tearing down a historical thing? Oh, no, 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 we're not going to give it. So, there's a timing thing going on here, and maybe it's a little bit deceptive, but you haven't done anything yet, you're going to get the grant, fix the town hall. It's a possibility?
Thank you.
Mr. Bukas?
Yeah, I have two notes on this subject. One is that if you wanted to remove this from the warrant article, you should have done it before the expiration for a petition warrant article.
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
So, great, we have one day to organize to get a petition warrant article on? I mean, it seems like, why, why put it on the warrant article and then snatched away at the last moment? It seems like you're undermining the democratic process of running the town. So, a lot of people had expectations that it was going to be there, and then snatching away at the last moment. I don't think that that's fair play, that's one comment. The other comment is, we're just vacillating on this issue, we need to stay the course. So, the parish house has not been torn down because of the warrant article, we've applied for grant money, so we've told grant people, we take this building seriously. If we now don't have this warrant article, which the warrant article just gives the town a chance to vote to not tear it down, not to restore it, not to spend money on it, not to just not tear it down, we're demonstrating them to these grant-making organizations that we're consistent. How are they going to grant us an L-Chip grant when we take money for a study and within one month? Or when did we approve the study money? Within two months, within ninety days? We've gone from, we'd like your money, to that building that you gave us the money for, we're tearing it down. The selectmen aren't giving it any chance to stay up. It just seems like you're completely destroying the ability of these people to trust you and to give us a grant. So, yes, there's only a chance of getting the two-hundred-thousand-dollar for the L-Chip money, we think that chance is very good, but I think that chance will be reduced to near zero if we don't keep the parish house around. So, you can view it as just a cost of trying to get future grants. Keep it on the back burner, keep it sitting there until the town hall is, is built, then if the Heritage Commission has come up with no way to fund this, if no grants can be gotten, years have sat there, and there's been many opportunities, then I say, you know, have another vote up or down on the thing, and it goes. But tearing it down now seems like a guarantee of, we're out two hundred thousand, no chance, no one's going to grant us grants for anything.
Anybody else?
Let me respond to that. I see your, by your argument with respect to the aspect of maybe holding on to for a period of time, but I can't see the L-Chip people holding us hostage on a renovated town hall to get L-Chip money for that if we don't come for money or maintain a parish house. So, I would think that's something that's violation of rights and regulations at this point, but I understand the idea of holding on to it.
I'm not saying that they would make money contingent on, we're only giving this if you promise to keep the parish house around. I'm saying that having a vote to take grant money to study the parish house, and then very quickly afterwards saying, we're getting rid of this warrant article which was sitting there, so now the parish house is slated to be destroyed, sort of said, well, we took this grant money for no reason. Why study a thing if the, if the board's sort of pre-drawn conclusion was, we just want to tear it down? We may also... We may also get to, if we, if we also wait for the study to come back and the board can say, ugh, this is way too much money to restore this, that's ample reason to go before the town and say, how can we possibly afford this? Or the town's not going to spend any money on this, or the town will only contribute 25, 50, whatever amount of money you want to contribute to it, and the rest has to be raised privately. But at least then there would be a price tag associated with it. Right now, the price tag is X. We don't know what it is. So I think it makes sense to wait until the information is in, but also just not to undermine that credibility because we did take money only to then tear down the building.
Can I clarify something? There's been a lot of talk in terms of grants, let's just clarify something first. There was, the board commissioned two assessments to be done, one in the town hall in October and one on the parish house in October. We submitted grants to the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, we were awarded two grants, one for each building. One of them was 4,500, the other one is a little bit less. So when we talk about, and I think this is what Mr. Bukas was talking about, we commissioned an assessment, we applied for a grant, we received it, and now we're saying, oh, but the thing we got the assessment and the grant for, we're going to tear it down. I think that's what he's saying. And that gives you almost no credibility in terms of the, the particular question. New Hampshire Preservation Alliance works hand in hand with L-Chip. L-Chip provides almost all their funding. So if we were to say, okay, well, thank you for your money, we did the assessment, now we're tearing the building down, that's going to get right back to L-Chip, because they're the same people, most of them, they serve on both. So I think, just to be clear about that, because L-Chip is one thing in terms of grant funding for that, but the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance is something else, so. I saw Ms. Tappin first and then Mr. Gudell.
So earlier I provided a timeline of what the board has supported regarding the parish house. I'm not going to go through that, but I think it's important to clarify something. L-Chip is the Land and Community Heritage Investment Program. They, they're not going to hold the town hostage in terms of, you have to keep this building before you can do anything about that building. I didn't bring my notes with me, but they have a list of more than a dozen criteria and goals for the program and how they seek to use the funds that, that they appropriated. And much of it has to do with community heritage. That's looking at the whole picture of a town and of the state and looking at the resources within that town, within that area, how it fits in the community. I am not a member of the Heritage Commission or the Historical Society, but I do think that it's important that the board be familiar with what are the goals and criteria of these organizations that the town would be approaching for, for funding. And there is a timeline here, and they're long timelines. And basically, the only thing that's being asked for is time. So again, it would be short sighted to not simply leave this on. And it does not infringe in any efforts to build a new town building, refurbish the town center. But by keeping the parish house for a short time at least, so that there's time to get more information, it seems foolhardy to not do that.
Paul was asking, 46 Life Re Lane. Just a reminder to everybody, we've been at this for like 11, 12 years. And for the bulk of that time, the parish house wasn't even on the radar screen. And it's only come up on the radar screen in the last two or three years. And it's very visible on the radar screen. On my list of seven to save, I would have put the town hall first. And without question, I would put the town hall first. Because I, I think that relative to, to the town and the history of the town and the heritage of the town, it outstrips the parish house in spades. I'm not saying the parish house isn't important, but once again, here we are, and there's been a criticism of this committee on my part. Once again, here we are, where we really should be talking about municipal office building and getting it through, and the town hall and getting it restored, and we get sidetracked. And I might want to mention that earlier, one of the people present tonight mentioned the things the town, the select board had agreed to. But one of the things that wasn't mentioned was who signed off on the application for seven to save? Somebody had to sign off on an application for seven to save.
Pardon? Heritage Commission.
Okay. A reminder to the chair of the advisory committee that you indeed are an advisory committee. Okay, of the select board. This committee is an advisory committee to the select board. Beholden to the select board. Any decision that passes through an advisory committee must pass through procedurally, should pass through the select board or the town administrator before it proceeds any farther. And I know it's water over the dam, but indeed, if, if that was signed off by the Heritage Commission on behalf of the town, I think a step or two maybe were missed along the way.
The seven to save program does not require the owner of the particular property to have any exit.
I'm talking about structure and procedure. You're an advisory committee to the select board. You're given a charge by the select board.
That was, you're talking about the TCVC. Heritage Commission is not, you know, a board of the, it's board of the town.
But, well, we get, yeah, we get into a gray area of laws and courtesies and common courtesies, but, and I'm on the agricultural commission, and I think I have a fair understanding of what commissions can do and can't do. Just a reminder to everybody that we're one town, okay? And we're here to, to work together. I'm not quite sure how I feel about this now, but, you know, I'm sympathetic to this situation, but I, I am concerned and very concerned about getting this municipal office building passed and getting our town center underway. So I'm sympathetic to these two select board members for, for their concern about the very same thing. So I'm not sure how to frame this warrant article without putting everybody on their heels. But I just would like to remind the TCVC that your primary charge, and it was delineated for you very, very carefully and very, very clearly a number of times, and recast early in the summer, was to work with the municipal office building, the town center and the town hall, the old town hall.
Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin, 187 Studing Stones Road, also a member of the TCVC. Some, a point that hasn't been made is that we may have what we think are the priorities, and we may think that the town hall is more important than the parish house. But the people that make the decisions about granting money, they have their own opinions. And we've been told that in competition, the parish house would win hands down over the town hall. We have been told that the parish house is almost a slam dunk. We've been told that, a no-brainer, excuse me, a no-brainer was the term that was used. Whereas the town hall is very likely to get funding, but it depends on what else is in the queue, what else has been applied for that year. So while the town hall may be more important to us, if we tear down the town, the parish house, it will show to the people that hold the purse strings that we would like to get. It will show them what the town's values are as far as its heritage, and that's the problem.
I'm going to be afraid to ask this, but why would the parish house be more important than town hall?
It's on the seven to save, and it checks all the boxes in terms of heritage, age, and things like that. So, and this is coming from that person that was on the Heritage, L-Chip committee, and that's 2018. In her view, the parish house is a slam dunk. If we ask for whatever it is, most likely we'll get whatever it is. The town hall is, has a very good chance of getting funded. And that's, and just take this, this is her opinion. So just like everybody, everybody has an opinion. Eric?
Thank you, Eric, 93 North River Road. I have one point of clarification and I guess three questions. The point of clarification, and this goes back to Paul's questions about the Heritage Commission. Both Heritage Commission and the Agricultural Commission are statutory commissions. And the overseeing statute is RSA 673. They have their own boards and they make their own decisions and they have their own pot of money, regardless of any influence from the select board. So the seven to save list was an application, I believe, that went in from the Heritage Commission. It didn't have anything to do with the select board. So you need to keep that in mind. Secondly, the question about the grant money to study or do an appraisal, will all that money have been spent on that appraisal? If, if we remove that question seven, will all, will that appraisal be completed and will all of that money have been used?
The parish house and the town hall, one was 11,500, the other was 9,000.
We got a discount?
That, I think that is a discount, but whatever. But the report will be done in February and into February, beginning of March, and we will expend those particular funds for those two assessments that were done. The grant money will come after the reports are completed. They do not give you the grant money until after the fund, the report is completed. So we'll have probably about $9,000 of money that will come in in anticipated revenue, I guess, as long as the board accepts it.
As far as grant money goes, or?
Just for the assessments, that's just for the assessment, for both structures.
But if you put the brakes on the assessment procedure by taking that and saying we're going to do away with the building, is there any language in the grant fund?
You wouldn't get that money.
If we don't do the assessment.
If you don't do the assessment, you don't get any grant money.
No, but I'm saying, you said the assessment is being done.
Right now.
And is it being paid for now?
There was a check in the manifest for a partial in terms of how much work they've done so far.
So my question is, if we, if we put the brakes on that, we have to pay that money back, period. Which may be, may be language in that because it exists in other grant pro packages. If you don't use it for the intended purpose.
The town pays for the two assessments, and then when they're done.
Then you apply for reimbursement?
Then, yes, then they'll pay the amount that they set.
So my third question, I guess, would be, is there a plan B if the bond does not fly? Where do we stand with all of these projects?
That's something that we need to have more discussion about. I think we kind of put it off. It's up to the board if they want to have that discussion. Right now, we're pushing for doing the town office building and then renovating the town hall.
But if these don't fly, where are we at? Where does that leave us?
That's something that the town, that our vision committee was tasked to do, and we presented that information to the board. There's various different options. One of the options that we brought to their attention is to rent some space at Market Bassett Plaza. I think the card store, where the card store used to be is probably the best place. We found out expenses for that, estimated cost for moving everybody up there. What the board could decide is, we do that for a period of time, renovate the town hall, put them back into it. We could do something like that. But we have, the TCVC has, has, does have information in terms of what that cost would be.
Do you plan on publicizing that information so that people can look at the big?
It's been presented to the board, so it's been, it's been out there. We have not had any discussions in terms of going down that particular route because we're trying to focus on the town office building. The other thing, just to let, in terms of points of point of information, I as an individual, personally myself, with no affiliation with the town and the TCVC or Heritage Commission, I can put something on the seven to save list. There is no requirement that you have to be part of the town or anything, or even the owner. So if I wanted to, I can submit, submit your house to the seven to save list. I don't need your permission.
It doesn't matter because I need a new roof, so I could use it.
Well, I would probably appreciate that, but does it not require the owner's consent or not at all?
Thank you.
Any other questions? One thing that you brought up, which I'm right that you did. From the last time, there was a concern about solid waste disposal hauling costs. Did you have anything from?
Yes.
Where did you go?
He had to check the sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah, he and I communicated about that today, and he thinks he's going to be okay. He's on even the same budget.
Okay.
Because he started to do some hauling himself.
So he thinks the 28,000 should be okay then?
So he's telling me.
So that's not an add?
But he will be back in at some point when he can come in that.
Anything else you guys want to huck out?
Is the warrants, yes.
All right. Couple of things in operating budget. We brought them up last time in terms of the new fire officer, a fire position, and a new police position. At this time, I'm not in favor of either of those two. And also in terms of, I would like to reduce the Scranton County homeless shelter from 2,000 to 1,000. And also, we need to have a conversation about the Oyster Reuse Association budget. About what? The Oyster of the Youth Association budget amount?
I think I originally wanted to bring that down to 15K.
Mr. Brown? So let's reduce Oyster Reuse down to 15,000, which is what the number was last year. Fire officer, police officer?
We've got the full-time fire.
Yep.
Yep. I think we absolutely need full-time fire. I can't tell you how strongly I feel about, we need to get our fire department, we need to get some more full-time officers on board.
Okay.
I agree with you.
Police, same thing? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I agree with you.
Mr. Brown?
I feel the same way about, about police officers. We need to get some more police officers on board. We need to get two men in a car as much as we can. And we can't do that, and, you know, if you think it's easy to have one man in a car in the, at 11 o'clock at night or whatever, no. We need to get more police officers on board, and the long-term goal should be to have two men in a car.
All right, let me speak to that. I do, I agree with you. However, you know, budget's running 5% over in the operational budget. I have to make a cut somewhere.
I understand, somewhere. And we need to find somewhere that's other than.
You have some others somewhere?
Every time we turn around, we turn around and we, when the first responders come to us, the chiefs come to us and say, you know, I need to have the person, I need a full-time person. We know that that's an expensive, yes, they're expensive people. The firemen, they're expensive people. And so we look at that first and say, oh, well, you know, no, we can't do that. Well, that's fine, you know, we're going to, we can put the money somewhere else. But call that somewhere else when you have the fire and see what you get. No, we need, we need more full-time officers on both forces.
So it sounds like.
That's there. That's all right, that's, that's my opinion.
It sounds like there's support for at least two of the selectmen in terms of the fire positions, so let's. so let's leave that in. In terms of police position, it sounds like we're not just two against it. Could I ask the police chief to come up and speak to that? Because it's my understanding, if you're going to have that new person, there was other things that you cut out, but if we weren't going to fund it, you wanted those back in then, could you ask those, please, chief?
It was ten thousand from the overtime mine.
Is that the only area?
Yep.
Well, it's going to come with part-time position.
Right, so you would want to put the part-time back in?
Yeah, put the part-time position back in.
So, this is, Julie, do you have the information in terms of making those two switches?
I want to make sure that I know what all the, I mean, it's, I know what the costs are in the chief's budget, but I want to double-check on the numbers in the personnel budget.
So, add the ten thousand to overtime in the police department and then work with the chief to find out what those other two are?
Mm-hmm.
That need to be changed. Anything else in the operating budget you don't want to talk about? Anything that anybody wants to talk about, operating budget? Not that we can't do it a little bit later, but. Let's go to warrant articles.
Did you officially reduce the Scranton Fund? You think so? I didn't hear any agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just. Yes, I propose. Are you in agreement, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
So, make that change too? So. So, the warrant. Number three, the bond.
I'd like to make an adjustment on that. Let me preface this at the beginning before I talk about moving bodies around. Right now, what I see, the delta is like, was it five hundred and sixty thousand dollars associated with capital? For?
I'm sorry.
For all the different funds, yep. For all the capital reserve funds request?
Five hundred, we're at five hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Five hundred and sixty thousand. What was it last year for all the capital reserve fund requests?
Four hundred and thirty-five.
So, it's a considerable increase. So, I want to make this proposal on Article Three, but also it's tied to Article Nine. I remember Miss, Miss Hawthorne came the other day and she made a proposal and she said, well, why don't you not reduce the bond amount by a hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the capital reserve fund associated with buildings? And that way there, I don't think people want to, if they're going to go for the invisible bond, they're going to go for it for the, for a new building and I think a hundred and twelve thousand dollars is not going to make any difference. Leave that in, that, you know, the, for the capital reserve fund for, what's the fund name I'm looking for?
Town buildings?
Town buildings, capital reserve fund. And leave it in there. Now, I can't believe, I heard some comments last time that we have to specifically tie to separate fund monies if we want to use that for renovating town hall. I think if it's in the, you know, the capital reserve fund, the board of selectmen say, don't touch this money and hold on to it as long as the board stays intact. And hopefully we'll be able to move on at that time. So, I'd like to be able to do, and with your permission, is remove that piece that says reduced by a hundred and twelve thousand dollars and have to, obviously, the amount will have to go back to two thousand, a hundred and twelve thousand. But then, at that point, that would give us a hundred thousand dollars more back into the original town building capital reserve amount, which will give us more money towards getting that match that's associated with the, the need for L-Chip or something down the road. In lieu of that though, I'd like to reduce Article Nine down to fifty thousand dollars. So, basically what I'm doing is moving a hundred thousand dollars from one, if you want to call it, Article Three, bringing it back into that reserve account and reducing that by fifty thousand dollars, which will allow us to get below this five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Trying to make it more palatable for the citizens of the town to lead because we're still running a fairly high operational budget. And I think this one way is kind of moving the monies around. So, that was my thoughts. I thought she came up with a nice idea.
Okay, you want to take fifty thousand out of?
Now, what I want to do is.
You want to reduce?
Take this away so the bond folds up to two thousand, a hundred and twelve.
The hundred and twelve thousand. That's what you want to take away?
I want to take it out of here.
Right.
Right, and that means we're not going to take it out of the town building capital reserve fund. So, it remains in there. So, how much do we, if we leave it in there?
Got it, got it.
What would they give?
Well, we've got two hundred and fifty-two thousand right now.
Right, so, so once that will now be reduced then. All right, and if we add fifty thousand in, that would give us creeping up towards?
Well, those are two different ones.
Correct.
Because there's renovating the town hall and then there's town building capital reserve.
But we can take money out of the town building capital reserve fund to use that as matching funds, but the ones are already in the other account.
I think the only, I'm, I'm with you until that last part because I think it has to be designated. Because right now, excuse me?
No, I spoke with L-Chip today, George Morton.
Did they say that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because I was going to say, that's the part that we need to check.
It does not need to be a special fund.
But does, has to be designated for that particular purpose?
No.
So, those ones would be there. So, I think it's, that way there, it's asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
And Article Nine is, is a lot of money. So, I want to put at least fifty K in, but it's like, we're really putting, we're not taking out money.
I understand, okay, I understand.
So, I'd like to move this Article Three by bringing the bond amount up to two thousand, a hundred and twelve dollars.
And strengthening that sentence that who draws money from the town building capital?
Well, that's the town minister to try to bring the language up a little bit.
So, the board is in agreement with this?
We haven't heard from Mr. Brown, but.
Yes.
So, let us change the bond amount to the two million, two hundred. Two million, nine hundred and twelve thousand?
So, I'm going to give ABC, Mrs. Hawthorne credit on that one.
And Channel Nine, geez.
Channel Nine?
Article Nine, Article Nine will change from a hundred and fifty thousand to fifty thousand?
Correct.
Is that? Yep. Okay.
But be it known that the money that we're putting into the town building capital reserve fund will be targeted. At least some of them are. Or it could be all at some time. It could be totally targeted.
Yep.
As need be for renovation of town hall to try to get those matching funds.
If L-Chip's going to go to that, that's perfectly fine. All right. You want to go through these one by one?
Yeah.
Good with them or how do you want to do it?
I don't know.
Okay.
You should go through it one by one.
One by one?
Yep.
So, anything else in Article Three? No?
No.
Okay. Article Four? I'm sorry?
There's an amount there for the first year's interest payment?
So, that will be?
That'll be achieved.
A new number, slightly larger.
Oh, sorry, yeah, because that goes on to the second page. Okay. So, and you generate that for us, Mr.?
Anybody with a calculator can, yes. Just take that number and then multiply by.
I've been here for an hour and a half and my brain's a little bit quiet.
Multiply by two point nine million, divide by two point eight million.
We'll talk about that tomorrow.
So, we just need to put in what is that, that interest payment is for the first year? All right. Anything else with number three? Number four?
No.
That's it, okay.
We can't do anything.
We'll just get the number when we finalize whatever that is. Number five?
I'd like to talk to this a little bit as well. I know I'm working on a solid edge with the chairman at the planning board with respect to the CIP, but I'd like the eighty-seven thousand dollars to come out into already existing funds of our capital reserve fund. Knowing that in the future, we're going to have some pain associated with buying a new fire truck, I do understand that. But also, a reduced amount of money that we'll have to raise associated with this company. Fire chief, you have any problem with that?
I'll speak while I'm next to the microphone. Just to remind everybody that the reason that we pulled the fire truck warrant article was that the fire chief anticipated that it was going to be sixty thousand dollars higher than the five hundred and eighty-seven thousand that was in the CIP. So, sixty and ninety would be in the hole by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars buying the fire truck next year.
Yes.
And we're already putting a hundred and seventy-five thousand in that account. Does the board have any thoughts about using the unassigned fund balance?
Can we hear?
Can we do it?
Can we hear from the chief?
Can we, yes. Go ahead, sorry.
I always get his radio.
He just wants to let you talk. He just wants the radio.
Yeah, I totally disagree with that. It's going to set us back a couple of years. And the whole time I've been chief, the last five years, we've been trying to build that up. We've been trying to add equipment into that, like the gear extractor and other items, thermal imaging cameras. So, when I took over and when we bought the tanker, we were already set back with that. So, the incoming funds from that year for the warrant article went towards the tanker. So, we were, it's just, we're trying to play catch-up every year. And so, I understand where you're coming from with the tax money, but at the same point, it's going to throw a huge wrench into the plan that we already have. And like Julie said, that there's a nine percent tariff increase on the metal for the truck, so the truck's going to be even more expensive. Our utility truck has spent the last week pretty much in the shop and that's going to be the next truck app for an engine to get replaced. So, and that's starting to come to fruition sooner rather than later of all the issues that we have. So, I understand where you're coming from, but for the long-term plan of everything else, I just think it's going to set us back too far.
Okay.
Eric Rogan?
Julie, you said we can take it out of the unassigned fund balance?
We can, we've done it in the past.
What do you think? Pass the chief a question. You're not going for the truck this year, but you go for next year, next March?
I'd like to. That would be my plan at this moment.
I'm just thinking, a hundred and seventy-five thousand goes in. Because right now, you've got, I think Bob Smith makes these things so small just so you can't see them. Four hundred and?
Four hundred and thirty-three, four ninety-two.
So, four thirty-three, we're putting a hundred and seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand. So, that would bring it up to about six hundred thousand, six oh two.
But you're taking stuff out if it passes Article?
Yeah, twelve thousand.
Yeah, twelve thousand. So, that brings it down to five ninety. So, just thinking about logistically, you're not going to buy until July first, two thousand twenty-one, correct? At that point, you think it's going to be how much, six hundred?
This year?
This year?
They're saying six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we had it in the plan for five hundred and eighty-five thousand. And every, the prices just went up within the last couple of weeks.
That is going to be very tight, John.
And that's why I want to take this money out of the unassigned fund balance to try to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. I do realize that I sit in CIP and I do understand the chief's argument. So, I'm trying to make a point. And if Julie says it's possible, I was hoping to pull the selectmen and I would move in that direction. That way there, it's more palatable to the town. So, I do believe the radios are needed, no question about it. And it will try to reduce that five hundred and sixty thousand down to something more, since we're, you know, the budget is still quite high.
Mr. Brown? I'm struggling with this one.
I mean, I understand, we just talked about wanting to keep the unassigned fund balance because it helps our program reading.
But this is, it's not three hundred thousand taken out either.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Tappin?
Sorry, just, John Tappin, 177 Stones Road. Just trying to follow. Right now, there's a hundred and thirty thousand with what's in the fund and what's already encumbered or been spent. And you're not buying, you're planning to put a hundred and seventy-five thousand in this coming fiscal year, but you're not buying the truck.
Right, but you are doing the camera.
Which is twelve thousand.
So, that brings you down to balance of about five hundred and ninety.
And then, the year after, when you're going to be buying the truck, you're going to put another a hundred and seventy-five thousand in.
Correct.
Right.
But he also wants to buy a utility at the same time unless that gets pushed out. That doesn't get pushed out?
That cannot get pushed out right now.
Okay.
It would squeeze.
Yeah. Because I think somebody would have to work out logistics in terms of when money goes in and when money comes out to see if this works. But either way, the eighty-seven, the eighty-seven thousand isn't even in the CIP.
Correct.
So, like, for instance, projected, if you were buying the truck this year, they're projecting in two thousand twenty-one, then that whole fund, there'd be like five thousand dollars in there, that's it. Putting in two thousand twenty-two, that brings, with the truck coming out, the thermal imaging camera coming out and the utility truck coming out, leaving about ninety-five thousand. So, depending on how things work out, if you took eighty-seven out of there, you'd have about eight thousand dollars left. But then, everything gets pushed out after that.
That's one of the reasons I'd like to take it out of the unassigned fund balance and it'll reduce the burden on the towns. Folks will respect their taxes. And it's also a better opportunity that since it's taken out of existing funds, the chance of getting passed, I think is greatly enhanced. Just like the next one associated with the twelve thousand two hundred, since it's coming out of the, you know, the fire capital reserve fund, there's a greater chance of.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, if we go with the unassigned fund balance, it's not a great amount of burden on the unassigned fund balance. We got over two million dollars.
Chief, did you have something else? You're just there answering questions?
He's just there in case. I'll talk to him some more.
What do you think, Mr. Brown?
No, I support that, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. So, let's change. Oh, sorry. I always hesitate to call in Eric because Eric always has.
Do you have something? In, in the projected price of a new truck, are you taking? Is this a totally additional truck or are you getting rid of one truck? Getting rid, what's the salvage eye of that truck?
When we replace the tanker, the old tanker, we got forty thousand dollars for it. I don't...
So is that gonna offset some of the price between that and the five fifty, the utility truck, which you're probably talking twenty thousand?
Well, engine would be for the engine, so the engine would go for that, the utility. I don't know if they can get anything for that.
Give you a dollar.
I think you need to...
You're gonna have a lot, you're gonna have a big bill on that truck in about a week.
Makes us own oil anymore.
We could trade it for his pickup.
So we'll change Article Five and source of funds is not taxation, but the unassigned fund balance. That, my understanding correct?
Yes.
Anything else from number five? No? Item number six?
Good.
Nope? Number seven? You're gonna leave it.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, why don't we remove?
Yeah.
Number seven? You mean in a boat, or what is the...
Did we remove or demolish the Lee Parish House until July twenty-two to allow the Heritage Commission sufficient time to explore options for its preservation and future use?
So you wanna keep it?
Yeah.
Let the record show that Mr. Bugby and Mr. Brown wish to keep number seven, and Mr. LeCours does not.
Correct.
Item number eight, you good with that one?
Yes.
Number nine, we've made the change. It's from one hundred and fifty down to fifty. Item number ten, Article ten, you okay with that one?
Is the library gonna speak to this?
The library is in the back of the room, if you wanna ask them.
Put her on the gentleman's chair.
No, she's here on the seat.
Mrs. Kozowski, Library, trustee and chair. We have asked for this because we're feeling that we want a little bit more to be in the, in the Capital Reserve Fund before and after we have a plan, but also so fundraising can take place once this plan is in place. So we're hoping to add a little bit each with fundraising through this Capital Reserve Fund, so that we won't have to go for any kind of bond, so that whenever we're ready to do the addition and the renovation, we'll have all the money that we need.
That's what I wanted to hear. Bill Bond, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you. So, please, please. So, right now, you've got three hundred and...
Eighty-three?
Three eighty-nine.
Three seventy-nine, plus you've got sixty thousand in the other, so that's four hundred and thirty thousand, so you're expecting this to be even more than that?
We think it will be. We're definitely keeping it under a million, and we realize that it's going to be not only an addition, but a renovation of the schoolhouse building, which includes shoring up the floor and doing the ADA compliance issues in that part of the building that, you know, has been analogged to every year and over the year.
Now, don't just forget, now that brought up another question, since we had a presentation about the new municipal building, there is discussions between your group and the new municipal building?
Yes, we've been following it, and we're also very interested in keeping the infrastructure will be part of that, you know, and it's important that, as I said, we have been following it so that we know what's up and what's going on, and we're definitely in favor of the bond.
Yeah, because one of the things, I've contacted Mr. Giselle about this, to see if there's, we coordinate, the chief seems to be amiable, I don't put words in your mouth.
That's right.
But one of the things that, at least the plan that the TCPC's put forward, there's additional parking. The other thing that has to be concerned in terms of the septic system and well systems and stuff, there's no sense us doing multiples of those. The idea would have a septic system and a well system that provides that for both structures, the town hall, the renovated town hall, and the library. So we need to coordinate those things, so that they don't put it in their plan and they have it in ours. But hopefully, we can work for that. We seem to be able to do that. I'd rather work with them than not, and then against them, but, you know, there's some things that we're doing that are just gonna support their particular efforts, specifically the biggest things in terms of parking for the programs.
Right, and the septic system especially.
Yes. You don't like pumping that, do you? So...
But I'm good with the fifty.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, you can do that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Article number eleven, Town Building Capital Reserve Fund, fifty thousand.
Yes.
Article twelve, twelve thousand, twenty-five thousand deposited into the Highway and Bridge Improvement Plan?
Yes.
Yes. Thirteen, fifty-five thousand in the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Plan?
Yes, yes.
Fourteen, twenty thousand into the capital, uh, transport station equipment Capital Reserve Fund?
Yes.
Item number fifteen, Article number fifteen, see town replace appropriate, ten thousand for the fire ponds and system Capital Reserve Fund?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say yes, but I really think that for the system that we're underfunding the fire ponds and system in progress in the long term, at twenty, what are it, twenty thousand a year?
So what in the...
So what was I doing?
Yeah, what? If I remember correctly, the price for system, it is eighty thousand, is that right or not?
Hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, that's one up, that's the last time I heard.
Well, it's, I took it from the plan.
You know, at twenty, at twenty thousand, at twenty thousand a year, you're not gonna be putting in a lot of systems. And I don't know what the total requirement is, but I'm just saying, I think it's light definitely.
Well, right now, there's, I hate these small figures, one hundred and thirty thousand in there right now?
Mm-hmm.
The next one that's planned is the Elder Osborne System Repair in two thousand twenty-three. So that fund doesn't dip until we get out into, what, two thousand twenty-seven? Well, two thousand twenty-five dips to ninety-five thousand, seventy-three in two thousand twenty-four. Based on the plan, they have sufficient funds, so...
For how many?
There's one scheduled for the Lee Hook and Burley DeMaron for a hundred thousand in two thousand twenty-four. There's one for the Center of Town in two thousand twenty-seven, which...
They're a hundred dollar piece, is that right?
Yeah, a hundred thousand for Lee Hook, Burley DeMaron, a hundred and two one.
Okay.
And then the only thing that's changed in this, which we asked the chief before, which he, he'll reiterate, if the thing, whole thing happens in the town center, he'd switch those two. So he put the one in the center of town before, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the only change, but they seem to have sufficient money based on what the plan, if the plan changes, like...
I would just like to raise one issue. Several years, three years ago, maybe, maybe longer, I wrote a letter saying that I would provide a piece of land to install a system in, in the Portland...
That was seven years ago.
Et cetera, et cetera. I don't know if it's on the schedule yet.
Your answer, everything.
It wasn't chief's.
It wasn't chief's.
All right, I just wanted to remind that...
Yeah, and I brought it up in the past, we do have, two chiefs ago, we did do a study, and we looked over the whole town, and that's where we're pulling these out from, for the CIP, those are the biggest ones that we want to get accomplished now. But also, looking over it, I think it's time we need to put a little bit more money into the repairs as well. There's a lot of, you know, dry headers that we have out there, systems that we have out there that just aren't a hundred percent, so I'd like to start looking at that as well. I thank you for your support for the systems, I think the account's okay right now where we're at. And I think, like you said, I fully support moving the money around so we can do the town center first, if that comes to fruition, so I think we're okay right now, but there's definitely that research that we can look at to add more as well for the future.
Well, the offer still stands for that piece of land.
All right. Can I ask the chief a question? I was down on Hobbs Road for another purpose, but at the end, in the cul-de-sac, is that like a, kind of like an open system, like Lamprey Lane? There seems to be a little pond in the middle, and there's like a hydrant kind of thing? Well, not a hydrant, but a, so is that one too?
A standpipe, is that what?
Yeah.
It's called the Lamprey River.
A little bit of ways for the Lamprey River. But is that one that you guys maintain or use, or that just...
Yep.
Okay. I try not to, but Eric's kinda loud, so you have to...
I'm bigger.
Plus, you have to listen to Eric's catering anyways, because everybody in your place...
I told you it's PR.
Your employees tell me differently, Eric, so...
Where were we?
We're on fifteen.
Fifteen.
Oh, we're on fifteen. Anything else with fifteen? You're good?
Good.
Sixteen?
Good.
Good, I don't have to read it. Seventeen?
Good.
Eighteen?
Good.
Nineteen?
I have no reason why not to. Then again, five to eight, you just split both.
Well, it says you're gonna have up to eight. So they could choose to have seven, and then have an alternate to do that.
Now, before I leave this area, just want to... So right now, what's in the Town Building Capital Reserve Fund?
Four hundred, no. Two hundred and fifty-two thousand.
Two hundred and fifty-two thousand, and then we're dropping in...
Thirty-five thousand.
Now, we're dropping in...
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, which is approved fifty thousand.
The Town Building Capital Reserve?
Yeah. Renovating Town Hall, we're dropping fifty.
Oh, I thought he was talking about...
Town Builders were dropping fifty too, fifty as well.
We're drawing fifty as well.
Into the renovating Town Hall.
But also into the Town Buildings Capital Reserve.
Oh, really? I have thirty-five thousand.
No, that's what the ABC recommends, he just said that.
I'm looking at Article number eleven, it says fifty thousand.
Hmm.
I think that's a Caribbean Vacation Slush Fund that's happening, I think that's what that is.
So just follow with me a little bit.
Yeah.
So at this point, in a renovation Town Hall Fund with fifty thousand, we're adding fifty, so that's a hundred.
Yeah.
So what did you say we added in the other part, two hundred?
Two fifty-two.
So they'll give us three fifty-two.
Three hundred and two.
I'm trying to put all the funds together, see how much we'd have between...
Four hundred thousand.
Between the two funds, if all this comes to fruition.
Four hundred thousand?
Yes. Four hundred thousand.
John? You see what I'm doing, John? Trying to put them all together.
John Tappin, the Trustee's Trust Man, so the end of November, the Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund has two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred. You've already spent money out of there.
Yes.
Right.
True.
And I believe that if, I know that on the assessment of the buildings, we came in way under the maximum that was approved, but I think of those maximum amounts, that draws us down to about two hundred and twenty thousand. We have, for the cost consultants, ten thousand six hundred, and then for the two assessments of the two buildings, that was twenty thousand five hundred, but we've got a thousand dollars taken off of that, so it's nineteen thousand five hundred, and we can give it back, back about nine thousand, but that doesn't happen till next year.
Right.
And when it does, it goes into general fund, and then next year, you'd have to, to put it back into this, you'd have to have a Warren Article to do that.
So it looks like at this point, if everything goes in this direction, we'll just have about four hundred thousand dollars. You said about two twenty, plus fifty's already in one account, we're putting...
Well, you have to have those expenses out, which is what John was just talking about.
Yeah.
Right, so, so with those expenses, not the full amounts that were approved, but what we've actually spent the end of this year, two forty, you're a little under two forty, and then, so two thirty-something plus the, so you're for the, the four thirty.
So we're getting close to the amount of money we would need, so I have to L-ship at that point.
Those are currently, that's currently in five, over five hundred dollars a month, but that's going down next year.
So we're well on our way, if we were to use those two funds, if it all passes.
If it all...
If it all passes. That's it.
Anything else with any of the boards?
No.
Anything else without anybody? No? Any other comments from anybody on, anyone who's two? No? Anything from you, Julie? Okay. So I officially closed the budget hearing. Now the regular business.
Oh, are you gonna vote on the budget?
And then we do that next time.
No, we're gonna do that on the twenty-first.
There's too many unknowns.
Okay.
At least for me.
Okay.
The issue with the police department, that's...
Yes, so...
Thank you.
Why, we can just vote down your budget if you wanna do that, Karen.
No, you know what? She's already reduced her budget.
Thank you, John.
I wanna take that though.
Thank you.
All right, item number five, Steve Bullitt, Public Force Manager.
All right, so I'm here tonight to talk about the tunnel road culvert, so we'll do that one first. We were denied again for the FEMA grant that we applied for, that would've been our fourth time we were denied on it, and this time, we were denied because Washington was worried about opening the width up too much for a bridge and what we would do to upstream land and plants in the creek bed. If we all of a sudden, if, when the Lamprey backed up, we let all that water in at once and let it all back out, they were concerned about the width. They also have some formula that they do, where they calculate the amount of money it costs compared to the amount of people that it would affect, and the amount of people that would get stuck on the other side for the money wasn't worth doing it for them. So we were, got stuck in the position where the wetland rules were about to change, and it would've made getting any permit that much harder to, to receive. So we went forward and submitted the application on the per, for a permit to slip line the pipe. Under the old rules, I met with the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, they wrote a letter of recommendation for the project to go forward to DES. So the bridge is out, we, there's not, it doesn't, it's not feasible to try to do it ourselves for such a small crossing. We can slip line the pipe and do the whole project for probably sixty, sixty-five thousand instead of what our share of that would've been, which was up into the hundreds. But included in that is the bill from the engineer for all the FEMA grant work that we attempted and didn't get, and the actual wetlands permit, and all the work that was associated getting to the point we're at now, and that was for nine thousand five hundred dollars, and I was hoping to take that out of the Bridge Capital Reserve Fund. Back in two thousand seventeen, the board approved entering into a contract with the engineer to go through with the project to get to this point. No. No questions.
All set. I moved to authorize, excuse me, authorize the withdrawal of nine thousand five hundred dollars from the Highway Department Road and Bridge Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund for the payment of the right angle engineering invoice in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars for our FEMA grant work and the wetlands application completed with regards to the tunnel road culvert replacement. Oh my goodness, that's a...
Second.
That's a loving one. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it passes.
All right, and then the Chesley Creek Bridge, or the Tesley, the Chesley Creek culvert, which is on Packers Falls Road, which we've talked about before, that was on the list of ones to get done. The wetlands permit has been submitted for that project as well to slip line it, and included in the agenda packet was a quote, "to do the job" from about a year ago. We obviously haven't signed it, I just wanted to give you guys an idea of how much it was gonna cost to do that project as a slip line compared to a quote that we found to do a box culvert that was three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And I met with the Oyster River Advisory Committee last week and talked to them about the project, and they seemed like they were on board with it, they only had two members show up, so I have to, they're gonna go back and talk to the rest of their committee, I gave them, 'cause they have a certain amount of time to speak on it, so we had to grant DES a longer time to speak on it, so it would give them a chance to do it. And the, if everything works out right and we move forward with it, and if that company were to win the bid that gave that bid, or that quote, we would try to do both of them at the same time to cut down on our mobilization fee, so they'd have them both ready to go, and they'd grow each one up on the same day, and each one would probably take two or three days to complete from start to finish compared to opening the road up and everything else. And I don't have to close the road either, we can do it with one-way alternating traffic. So it's less environmental impact, we don't have to dig the road up, it's cheaper all around, and the aluminized steel liner they're gonna put in has a seventy-five-year lifespan, so that'll put it well into the future.
So, Steve, I have a question in terms of, listing the CIP, I don't see anything for the Chesley Brook or Packers Falls, so is that not in here?
It's on there. The Chesley Brook one's in there.
Okay. What is it under? Okay, what is it under? They got Fisher Brook.
It might be under Packers Falls, it should, it should be, it's on there.
There's no Packers Falls. I'm seeing Fisher Brook culvert tunnel, is that it? Fisher Brook?
It's called Chesley Brook, it's under the wrong name then.
Oh.
It'd be the very first-
Yep.
-pipe you come to if you turn off a one fifty-five.
Okay, so maybe can we get them to change, so we all talk about the same thing versus- So Fisher Brook is not right, so what is it called?
Chesley Brook.
C-H-E-S-L-U-R?
Double S.
Double S?
Yeah.
Really?
Okay. But that one's scheduled for two thousand twenty-three, are you still looking at that particular date, or is it-
Yeah, I'm looking around that particular date.
Okay, all right.
That would give us a long enough-
Okay.
-time to get everything set.
Good. All right. Thank you. Excellent. All right, um, any guys else in library, library? Library trustees chair, it's too late, guys.
Okay, this is the reason that, um, we have put, put this on the agenda is because we'd like to, uh, tell you about all the details in, um, receiving the proposals. In Novem, on November twentieth, we had a walkthrough of the, of the facility, and five firms came, and as a result of that, four, we received four RFPs. And the library trustees went through all four of them, compared them, talked about various things, including their experience and things that they have done, but also how we felt we would get along and, and work well with them. So as it turned out, we, um, agreed on SMP unanimously, and they have a number of different, um, projects going on in the area. Barrington, they, they did the Durham Public Library. Um, we had quite a conversation with Jason McCombe, who is the, the owner and the principal architect in the, in the, um, firm. And what we, um, decided was that this is probably the best way for us to go. Also, they have, um, a, a point where even though it's, um, twenty-four thousand five hundred, it can be less than that, especially if we use some existing files that we have concerning the conditions of the building. So that actually might go, be less than that. One of the reasons that we had to, um, bring this up is that we can't enter into a contract. So what we will do next is, um, meet with SMP and we'll go through the whole proposal, make any modifications and changes that we need to, and then, um, they'll bring that final, um, execution, um, contract, and then we'll bring that to you. I hope that you had an opportunity to read the proposal that they sent. It was very well done and, uh, we were happy with choosing them.
Any questions?
No.
Um, one thing in terms of, and it's on here, in terms of a doug alternate. So we have, um, documents from when the Baller Verstinger did it.
Right.
So, let me know who it is and we can send that stuff to them and see if they can use it. There is a Revit file in there for the whole site, I don't know if they can use just the part that's applicable to the library.
That was the, the point that they said, we could deduct up to twenty-five hundred dollars if we can, if there are files that they can use, and I think we definitely have some.
Well, before you enter into this agreement, or you enter into it, let, let us provide them to, to make sure that they can use them, um, and then they can see if they can deduct the whole twenty-five hundred or whatever.
Sounds good.
Because we've already paid for that stuff, there's no sense then replicating it.
And, and Jason McCombe is aware of the other, um, places that have happened, so he's already knows that there are things that we'll probably be able to use.
Okay, so he'll be back to us at some point?
Probably a couple of weeks.
Okay, all right, good.
So you're not asking for the money at this time, or you are?
Yes, yeah, we are asking. We are asking for the money at this time, the final contract we would, we will have to bring back to you with any changes from this amount.
Okay, which would probably be less, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, could be, yeah, could be. All right, good, any-
No, let's go forward.
Um-
Before she changes her mind.
Okay, um, I move to authorize the draw of an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars from the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund in order to pay SMP architecture for conceptual designs, engineering, and cost estimating for renovations in addition to the Lee Public Library. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who did the second?
Well, Mr. Brown did. Yeah, Mr. Brown.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, number seven, that's me. This is really, uh, one request and an update in terms of the town hall open house. Um, we did, um, an open house last Thursday from five thirty to eight. Um, I don't remember, how many, how many people did you say was there, Ian, twenty-four?
Brown, thirty.
Thirty, I thought, so there's thirty people showed up. It wasn't the usual people that show up for our meetings, which is good. Um, but my thanks to Denise, Joanne, and Julie, and Chief, um, Dronsfield, Mary Woodward, Don Quigley.
Joanne, sorry.
Oh, I said Julie.
Okay, Lynda and Liz.
Lynda and Liz for showing up, so we appreciate their particular time. Um, the Town Center Division Committee would like to do a couple more of them, so I don't know if you're in favor of us doing that or not, so, um, the one thing, and I'm not sure how the, he's gone, the chief, but we need a firefighter on site.
You do, that's right, because of the number of people in the building.
So I, I think, I don't know, we didn't get charged for the first one, right, Julie? I, we, we will-
Somebody's paying, yeah.
So we might have an expense for that, but we still have money for that, so, uh, if the board's amenable, we'd like to schedule two more, one probably right kind of before the vote, and then one sometime in, uh, February, so we'll work with the people to see if we can, um, plan another one.
I agree.
A lot of good questions, uh, we got some feedback, um, so hopefully, um, a couple more will do the thing. We're looking at also doing mailing to let people know when the open houses are going to be too, so that's something that we're going to do. The other thing is that, um, the TCVC with those particular sections we saw, or, excuse me, those stations we had at the town hall, we're going to be doing little videos, uh, and we're going to send those out to people too, so, um, you'll hear all of our voices. Mr. Blueface is listing all of us to be voiceover talent, so. So, um, I think it was a good time, uh, we had a lot of good questions, uh, people were in support of it, there was a few people that weren't. Eric was one of the ones that wasn't totally supportive.
That's not true.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
They had a lot of questions.
Yeah, he did have a lot of questions, yes.
Can I ask another question?
I knew I shouldn't have done it.
Well, no, I mean, it just, it just dawned on me.
You pointed out the crowd.
What is the occupancy permit for the town hall?
Well, we already, we, we, we learned that day that it's twelve.
So what does that mean for-
Not town hall-
No, the town hall.
The selectman's office.
Yeah, because of all the offices. If it's open, it's different versus if there's office coming in there.
It's a different floor.
It's a different, yeah. Something we learned too.
It's business use.
What would the occupancy be as an open building, open hall?
More than twelve, yeah.
What was the twelve, good answer.
John, do you know?
Well, that raises a big question as far as, you know, is it worth spending money on that building? We only get twelve people in there.
Well, no, no, no. If it's offices, only twelve, but-
So what is the occupancy as a full, open-
So, there's two classifications for meeting room. So this room here, uh, for concentrated use, which means you're having, um, like a reception. So there's no tables, no chairs, one hundred and twenty-seven people. Um, and that's done by taking the floor area, divide by seven.
People standing.
Excuse me?
People standing.
Yes, like a reception. Uh, less concentrated use, which means what we have now, we have tables and chairs and so forth, fifty-nine. Um, the town hall, this, this is a little under a thousand square feet. Um, the town hall is about twelve fifty, um, so the numbers would be proportional, so they'd be larger than that. Um, but there is, um, depending on the upstairs use, there might be some piece of that that's counted as, um, exit from the upstairs. Um, but anyway, we've been working on it, like eighty people. When it's all open space, not office space.
So, how many times have we been in non-compliance with people coming in at the town hall?
I would prefer not to answer that question right now, in public, but yes, we are at times not in compliance just through the normal course of our business deck.
So, so here's a good point.
It's another argument.
So, another argument as to why you-
So Denise and I have volunteered to leave the building when there are more than twelve people.
So there's a, there's an event that theoretically could take place during the holiday time where-
Well, no, because we have firefighters there.
Oh, that's true, and that, that's the thing that you mentioned, if we have a firefighter, there's no limit.
Well, there's still a limit.
Well, I asked Cody, he says, you know, have as many as you want, so, but I guess when you have a firefighter there, that particular restriction of twelve people goes away.
But then plus one.
Yeah, that one.
Yes.
Will be charged for that cost, for that firefighter.
It's very weird, you know, like Julie said, we only learned about that right before. So it's-
Live and learn.
Yeah.
Yeah, live and learn.
So are you asking for money for it?
No.
Okay.
I'm just asking for the board's permission to have two more open houses at the town hall. And, um, we still have money that you already authorized us to spend, and if there's a charge for the firefighter, we'll pick up that particular cost. Because there's no way, the people that we had there, I think we had thirteen people in terms of the TCVC and the people that we had in as kind of experts, so we're over right there, so. But, um, I, I thought it was a good time spent, um, there were some people there that we'd never seen before, very good questions. Uh, I was picking on Eric, Eric wasn't totally against it, but he had some suggestions, and that's something we're going to take into consideration, just like the comments we had from the other people. It's something we can do to tweak it, make people more, okay, well, I can deal with this, I can, you know, um, but I, it was good just to get out there and talk to people about things, let them understand what it is and what it isn't. And we got a lot of responses on Facebook about all these, all these things, and it was mostly misinformation, they didn't have the information, um, so. Good, but, good. Thank you for Mr. Brown's show up, um, I don't remember, did I see him?
No, I was at planning board.
Oh, that's true, so, but, um, it was a good time, um, plus we had leftover cookies, so, you know.
Well, there are no more, right?
Not anymore.
No, they're at my house, if you want to come.
Oh, they're at your house, I'm looking for them.
Yeah, um, so that's not good, all right.
But yes, let's do it.
All right, item number eight, towns, truly love the town of Pittsburgh. Nothing?
Nothing.
Number nine, I move to accept the agenda as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. If things were to-
No.
Nothing to sign?
They don't sign the minutes, that's right.
They don't sign the minutes.
It's funny, I was the one who forgot about that.
All right, item number ten, I moved into non-public session after I say ninety-one dash A, colon, three. Rule number two, items A and C, you have a second.
Gartner.
Uh, any discussion? No? Roll call vote, Mr. Brown, yes or no? Aye?
Aye.
Mr. LaCour?
Aye.
Mr. Bobby, aye, motion passes.
So would we be able to address the-
Damn you.
All right, um, we are sealing C, but not A. So I move to seal the minutes from section, non-public session, section C. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Brown, yes or no, for sealing?
Yes.
Mr. LaCour?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby, yes.
We've been sealed.
We've been sealed.
Sealed.
All right.
It's all futile, I think.
Miss Lady has unfinished business, gentlemen?
None.
I'm sorry, what? Anything in unfinished Miss Lady's business?
No.
Okay, motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is it before ten?